Please take a silent roll call. Do we have anyone on the phone? No, okay, very good. Ms. Carrie Johnson, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of our representative democracy.
And so as we, as we begin, I would just remind everyone on council and anyone who comes up to speak in the microphone to speak clearly and loudly so we can hear you and the folks at home can hear you because everything is on our YouTube channel. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed here under are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be discussed separately. Item number one, approval of the April 9th, 2024 Town Council Special Meeting Minutes. So this item actually was already approved in June, so this item number one is not on the consent agenda. We'll take it off. Item number two, approval of the July 2nd, 2024 Town Council Regular Minutes Meeting. That is not in your packets. Item number three, acceptance into the public record of the July 2024 Paid Bills. Item four, approval of the purchase of a legacy 6,000 PSI air compressor purifier for the Carefree Fire Department under state procurement in the amount of $61,574.91. Item five, approval of the lower bidder, approval of the low bidder for the interior and exterior painting for the Carefree Firehouse by Elite Professional Painting LLC for approximately $29,000. Would the council like to remove any of these items? So we're entertaining items three, four, and five. Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
I so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passage Nancy, thank you. Current events. So we have a number of things to talk about tonight. Again, this will be, I believe, our 11th care, our community conversations in the Visitor Center. So August 9th, 9 to 11, I'll be there. The Vice Mayor will be there. Councilman Delicio might be there, we're pending his confirmation. So please come out and speak with us. You know, at these town council meetings, we do a lot of talking and you do a lot of listening. So these Carefree Conversations are a chance for you to talk to, have an exchange of ideas and comments and whatever's on your mind. So it's a great thing to do. And if there's in your HOA or somewhere else you'd like us, you'd like us to do these meetings somewhere else or another time, just let me know. I'm happy to do it. The election. So thank you for all the candidates who ran. We had a number of new faces run. We had three incumbents or two incumbents run. So congratulations to those who won. The new council members will be seated in December at the December Council Meeting. So the first step is for the town council to canvass the vote. And that, what that means is basically we accept the voting results. And that has to be done by August 19th. So we will have a council meeting, it will be short, on August 13th at 3:00 here, and we will canvass the vote. And what we're talking about, the election, you might not have realized it, but leading up to the, up to the election, on Saturday and Sunday, July 27th and 28th, we had Town Hall open and Candace, our town clerk, was there with other staff members both days. And then on this past weekend, July, or August 3rd and 4th, they were open for signature verification. So they did a lot of work to help run the election. So thank you very much for that. Next topic, the general plan. So general plan, it's an election, November it's on the ballot, and the pamphlet is published to help the voters understand what's behind it and all those details. And that pamphlet includes pro and con arguments. So as residents of the town, you have until tomorrow at 4:30 to submit a pro or a con argument. So you bring them into Town Hall, you give them to the town clerk, and they'll be published in the, in the pamphlet. So if you have questions about how it's done, contact the clerk and she'll, she'll help you out. So why does it end tomorrow, August 7th at 4:30? It's by state statute. So we didn't set that deadline, the state government did. I have some good news regarding traffic management. So you might remember when we had budget discussions, we allocated funds to extend our traffic patrol with MCSO from six months to 12 months, and we approved that. But the county didn't have the manpower to support it. Well, last week, our county supervisor, Tom Galvin, called me and he told me that it's going to happen. So he couldn't tell me when, but my guess is probably in this, the next three or four months. We will sign an agreement with the county and that'll give us 12 months a year, traffic, traffic car presence in our town. So that helps with speeders and just having the car out there just induces better behavior by everyone. So it's really a good thing and I'm excited about that. Also, just, just to let you know, we did Coffee with a Cop in late in spring. We'll do another one in October. I'm in contact with Captain Laterno of MCSO and he's all on board for that and he'll probably come back to speak to the council in October also. So we're working just to bring MCSO to be a stronger part of our community and increase their visibility. Crosswalks, so you see all the crosswalk activity, construction on Tom Darlington? So that'll wrap up in, by the end of September. And, you know, if you look at those drawings that we put up, they're kind of complicated if you're not an engineer. But if you have questions about what we're doing, just come on in and we'll explain it to you. And lastly, town's 40th anniversary. So this month, we kicked that off with the first major event, historical happy hour, August 16th at Spirit in the Desert. All the tickets are sold. It's going to be great. So KT Palmer's daughter will be there. We have a number of folks who, who were involved with the, with the creation of the town in 1984. Other people were here during that time. Joe Gimmell, who's here with us tonight, has done a great job of pulling that together and all the other events that are associated with it. So even though it's sold out, you can go to venues and venues is going to have a watch party. So you may even want to make a reservation because I'm not sure how that's going to, how in demand that'll be. But they have three TVs in there and they'll livestream it. You can have a drink, have a snack or a dinner, and enjoy it. But this is, this is cool. You learn a lot about the history of the town from people who were there and probably a lot of anecdotes and it'll be fun. So I just encourage you to do that. And that's what I have, and I think the Vice Mayor has also some current events.
Yeah, you know, there's been some staff bashing lately and personally, I don't think that's okay. As you know, we, the council, come and go. We set policy and we're the group that runs the town. But it's the staff that is here year in and year out. They keep everything running. They keep the daily operations of our town going. If you have a problem with one of the staff, take it to Gary. If you have a problem with Gary, bring it to the council. But please know that we have one of the hardest working staffs around. I think we have 14 employees, which Candace is the smallest per capita in Maricopa County. So people are wearing two and three and four hats and we should, you know, we should respect them and, and make sure that we're thankful to them. So I just wanted to mention, the person who has the biggest number of jobs is Jim Keen. He has four. So, you know, we should, we should thank them and I just, I just want to say that we should be thankful to our staff and we should give them the respect that they deserve. Thank you. Oh yeah, and I have a, actually, I wasn't finished. I lied. There were three people that I wanted to pull out, but I also have something that will be on, yeah, Candace is going to put them on the table so you can pick one up when you're leaving. But I'd like to call out Gary Neese, who's our town administrator. Gary takes a lot of crap, you guys. But he's been dedicated to our community for over 22 years. He significantly, significantly contributes, contributed, sorry, to the general plan, zoning ordinance, and design guidelines. He's earned recognition from the State of Arizona Planning Association. He was appointed our town administrator in 2009. He oversees the daily operations, policy development, staffing, and finances, guiding the town through challenges like the Great Recession and COVID-19 shutdowns. His strategic collaborations and exceptional infrastructure management have garnered accolades, including recognition from the Arizona General Contractors Association for excellence in street pavement maintenance. And, you know, I don't know what we would ever do without Gary. At some point, we're going to have to find out, but it's going to be a painful process. The second person I'd like to call out is our town clerk and treasurer, Candace Contras French. She's our town clerk and treasurer. She handles the day-to-day HR matters, financial transactions, and financial applications, including managing over 1.6 million in COVID funds. She maintains all duties of the town clerk, certified by the State of Arizona and the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association as a state election official. As records clerk, she oversees record retention, destruction, and production following state mandated schedules. Candace also supports the mayor and town council managing legal matters and oversees the town's contract management. And the other person I'd like to call out is Stacy Bridge Denzack. She's our planning director and zoning administrator. She's probably the third person who takes the most crap. Stacy manages and implements the town's development goals, providing professional guidance on land planning, zoning, and current development activities. A Purdue, Purdue University graduate and licensed landscape architect, she has nearly 16 years of public planning experience, including 10 with the town of Carefree. Stacy plays a crucial role in guiding the town's development projects, ensuring they align with the town's long-term vision. So please pick up one of these. Every person on our staff is, is highlighted here and the next time you see them, please say hello and say thank you. Now I'm done.
So the other thing I would say, if you, if you take a look at this, it gives you a little bio about them. And so, in the end of the day, they're just like the rest of us, right? They're just humans and you maybe you'll read something there that you can connect with, relate to them, and they do a great job for us and, and they do a great job for all of you. So anyway, any other comments from council? This is a current event thing, we have to be, anyway, thank you very much. First item on the, or next item on the agenda, agenda item number seven, presentation by Rural Metro regarding wildlife, wildfire management. So, okay, great. So Sean, the PIO for Rural Metro, Sean Gillan Land is here. So thank you, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you said, my name is Sean Gillan. I'm the Public Information Officer with Rural Metro Fire Department. And what we're doing here this evening is to present to the council, I know a few of you have come to our Firewise meetings that we've been holding over here at the fire station. We've, I think we've had three so far. There's another one coming up on Saturday, the 10th. Just, and we'll kind of give you a preview of what the information that we're, what we're presenting there and, and hopefully introduce you to what Firewise is. I know you may hear the term Firewise thrown around a lot, but hopefully after this, you'll kind of understand a little bit more about Firewise and why we want to help Carefree become a Firewise community. It's really a, Firewise is a program put on by the national, or the National Fire Protection Agency. It's a national program that's structured to where communities can take involvement and help prevent catastrophic wildfires. And by doing that, the communities get involved by, on themselves. As you can see on the slide here, even the most robust, and this is what we really want to impress upon people, is that even the biggest fire departments in a catastrophic wildfire, like we're seeing now in Oregon, in California, we've seen some, they're going to be quickly outmanned. There's not going to be enough resources to put a truck in everybody's driveway to protect every structure. And that's where we hope that communities that have taken the initiative and become Firewise, have done the work to become Firewise, they can prevent those homes from igniting, they can survive a wildfire with hopefully little or to no damage. So it's a program that helps communities get involved and make that, take that action before the smoke's in the air, as, as the fire guys would say. Because that time, it's too late to start doing your, your preparations. Even the best, well, so what we're trying to do is educate folks on what are the best ways to prevent a wildfire from, one, getting to your house, and two, impacting your home. And so that's where Firewise has some different steps and we'll go through those, the next one, please. It's really, in addition to being a structured program and a, with a, you know, kind of a curriculum and stuff like that, and different things that the communities themselves have to do to meet those standards and become recognized by the, by the state or nationally as a Firewise community, it's also a community risk reduction program. It really brings communities together to help prevent catastrophic wildfires, whether that be an entire townwide or even small HOAs or small groups of community folks. It also brings the communities together with the fire departments and makes, helps them work seamlessly on improving safety. It increases the community personnel awareness, their preparedness, and their own safety on an individual level. Hopefully, they learn something from the Firewise program for themselves and how to make themselves better prepared for an emergency. And then ultimately, once a community becomes recognized as Firewise, as a Firewise community, that can impact their insurance rates. It can start mitigating loss within those areas that bring down insurance rates for homeowners. The next one. Firewise in Arizona. Arizona actually has one of the largest Firewise presence. It says 163 communities here in Arizona in the nation. It's as most in the nation, being recognized as Firewise. Carefree, if we were to get the, the program up and running, as we're hoping to do and as we're on, on the way to doing right now, or on that road, would join several surrounding communities to become Firewise. Carefree North Scottsdale and Rio Verde, Rio Verde Foothills area, we've now established a board, which is one of the things you have to do, is come up with a board of folks who kind of oversee the Firewise program. They've held their meetings. We're on schedule now for their first Firewise assessment class. So I believe that'll be August 31st, the location to be determined. But this is one of the steps in where the state comes in and teaches basic community folks how to then assess for the Firewise program. One of the steps when a property wants to become Firewise is they call the fire department. We go out, we, we walk their property with them and we, we point out things that may pose a risk. We're, we're helping them to try to create those ignition-free zones, and we'll talk a bit about what that is in a minute. But to create those ignition-free zones, how to more fireproof or harden their home so that if a wildfire does blow towards their house, hopefully that has nowhere to find, to find material to burn. There's no fuel close to the house, their landscaping has been, is trimmed properly, and hopefully their hope, their home can survive a wildfire. So that's what we're doing in Rio Verde Foothills right now. We have that group on board. We've done several assessments. I believe there have been some that I know of personal, personally through here in Carefree that have called us and had us come out and do assessments, HOAs and some other individual owners. So it's really starting to get that snowball effect and growing like we would want it to. If, if Carefree did become a Firewise community, would join several communities around here that are already recognized as Firewise. Tonto Verde and Rio Verde are recognized as Firewise. Mirabella in Scottsdale, Cresta Norte, you can see Rancho Mañana there in Cave Creek and Whispering Hills in Cave Creek, and a few more down south, Terravita, Winfield, Veronte down in Scottsdale. Those are all already recognized as Firewise communities, they've done their work. Our goal here for the Carefree Fire Department is to try to get this implemented by 2025. So probably in the spring of 2025, to have this up and running, have a board established, have folks onboard doing the work, preparing their properties for a wildfire. If we can make it through this wildfire season, hopefully, right? Right? I know we've had a few small ones. The next one? Uh, next. So a brief overview of what Firewise is. Most home fires are lost, not just because the fire actually runs to the house and catches the house on fire. It's actually more common for fire to impinge upon a house blowing embers. Those embers on the wrong, on the wrong or right type of conditions can actually blow very, very far, up to a quarter mile to a home and find a place to seat itself in an attic, in a gutter that's full of overgrown, you know, debris, up against a house where somebody's got their firewood stacked or hasn't done the proper preparations. If that ember can find a place to seat and catch fire, then the home could be lost to that structure fire, or to that, to that wildfire. So ground fires very, very rarely actually make it through the house. But that's part of what we want with Firewise, is the education piece that says, that goes out and tells homeowners, hey, this grass needs to be trimmed down. That tree that's overhanging the roof, we need to get up there and make sure that's cleared off so that that ember has nowhere to go. The, up in the attic, if we need to put a screen over that attic so that embers can't get into the attic and seat themselves to where they could then light the attic on fire. What we, in the fire service, what they call crown fires are the ones that burn across the top of the trees. One of the, one of the aspects of Firewise is to do that assessment and say, all these big trees together, we might want to thin these out, or at least raise them up so that if a fire comes across the ground and just burns through the, the grass, it doesn't have a way to ladder or climb up higher to get onto the attic or the roof line or something like that. And then, and then there's some distances. The next one, please. And this, and this is the nuts and bolts of it. How do you then prepare your home for, to be Firewise, to be recognized as Firewise? So it's about vegetation management. It's about creating home ignition zones. We really want people, you don't have to jump out there and try to create the, the whole 100 feet or 30 feet of defensible space that you may hear so much about, but start at your home and work out from the first five feet. We can start there and then we can slowly move our way out. It's about landscaping. The state guys will say, it's not about moonscaping your yard. You don't have to tear out every bush and all the desert landscaping. But you may want to space them out a little bit. So if a fire does catch one, it doesn't just continue to feed right to the next, to the next, to the next, and then up to your home. It, it goes into some of the fire-resistant construction, and then it's just about being prepared. Do you have, are you prepared for yourself to do an evacuation? Do you understand what the Ready, Set, Go program is about? How do I evacuate? What way am I going to evacuate? Next. And here's some, and for more information about the defensible space. So again, we're really trying to create those rings around the house, the first five feet, the next 30 feet, out to 100 feet if you have that property. Not only does this help protect your home, but this also offers our firefighters a safe place to defend your home. It's, it's very common in a very fast-moving wildfire, and as we said earlier, we might not be able to put a fire truck in everybody's driveway to defend that home. And if your home has not been prepared, if it's got fuel that's just too dangerous for firefighters to get in there, they may have to pass your home to go on to the next one because it's not safe for them to go in there and try to defend that. And unfortunately, then your home could potentially be a loss during that wildfire. So it's about spacing and creating these defensible spaces. The next slide. And then again, once again, removing, just limiting that risk. Anything that could be out there that could turn into fire fuel. And sometimes when we go on these assessments, we will see lots of stuff. Many times, people have done a lot of the work. So that's great. That's what we really want to see, is people have already put in the effort now to get to prevent that wildfire from moving and they're already very close to just being in that Firewise recommended path. Next, please. So that's pretty much Firewise in a nutshell and what we're trying to get rolling here. It's a very big effort. One of the, one of the key points of it is, it's not a fire department effort, really. It's a community effort. Again, we don't have the manpower to go out to everybody's property and mow their yards or trim their trees, but we really need the homeowners to get involved and do that work to protect their properties. And the payoff in the end is a Firewise recognized community, again, could be lower insurance rates, could be that their home doesn't, doesn't get impacted by a wildfire. Once through, and once a community does become Firewise recognized, then they do, there is an opportunity for federal grants. So they can then get grant money to do more work around their area, to, to bring in people to help clean, to bring in landscaping companies to do some of the work that they just couldn't do. So that's our goal, is to bring Firewise here, get it introduced, get as many folks onboard as we can. I know, like I said, the mayor has been there and many other, the council members have been to the meetings and it is starting to get those legs and starting to run. So we thank you for your effort as a council and the mayor here for helping us to kind of bring this forward. And I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Good job, thank you. It's so important because we have fires all around us and this year in Carefree, we have been so fortunate. The few fires that we've had have been small, thanks to the efforts of Rural Metro that kept them under control, but there's a lot of luck involved with that. So when it comes to a community, because we're, the town is a community, but for the, for the purposes of the Firewise, what constitutes a community?
So for the purposes of Firewise, a community could be anything from about eight homes to 2,500 homes. If it's more than that, they'll just kind of divide it up into smaller sections of, and define that as a community. It would be similar to just taking a pen and drawing a circle around your, your community and saying, this right here, we want this to be, whatever the name of it, you want to be Carefree Firewise. And then you would start, you would start to initiate a board of folks who are going to oversee that. You would start calculating, you'll start tallying hours so they, for every number of home, if you had 100 homes in there, they'd have to do like 100 hours of preparation work or education or just meeting and talking about Firewise preparation and escape planning. And once all that's been tallied up and you submit it to the state, the state then approves all that stuff and then, and then basically, once the time is gone, it's about, usually about a year's process, once that time is done and all the hours have been logged, the state will come out and recognize that community.
So that's why an HOA being in Firewise is easy in the sense that there's already a board, there's already an organization, so the HOA just has to get everybody onboard. In fact, they probably have more power than we do sometimes to, to crack the whip and get people to do things. So if you live in an HOA, I would encourage them to go to the Firewise meetings in the Firehouse, August 10th and 24th, 9:00. There's all kinds of information there that they can take, pick up, distribute within their communities and get, get people onboard. And if you don't live in an HOA, just talk to your neighbors, your immediate neighbors, and you can pull together eight or more neighbors, you're all contiguous, they're all attached to each other, and you can get into the program.
Absolutely.
So as a town, we've, we have reached out, I believe, twice now to HOA presidents just to encourage them to send their representative and, and participate.
Yeah, one of the questions I do get is, is there a cost to be Firewise? No. The cost, I guess, the onus would be on the homeowners, obviously, if they're going to pay for landscaping or their time, whatever that's worth. That would be the only cost impacted, but there's no cost to be Firewise. One of the other questions I get quite often is, will, will my insurance company find out that I'm not Firewise, that I haven't done my work? No. When, when we do the assessments, that paperwork's just internal, it doesn't go to your insurance company, they don't look and shake their finger at you and say, we're going to cancel your insurance because you didn't follow all these prescribed things. So those are some of the things. I've got many insurance companies calling, asking me, hey, you know, would Firewise help my folks? Absolutely. I mean, anybody who lives in the urban interface or on these more outlying areas where we interface with desert and, and, and communities would benefit from it, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, presentation of the Strategic Communications Work Plan by Carefree Communications Manager Madison Garrett.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Today I'll be presenting the Strategic Communications Work Plan for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. You'll find the full work plan in your packets, about six pages. It's not super long, it's pretty straightforward. This work plan covers most all, almost all aspects of communications for the town, including my main responsibilities, core missions, tasks, and goals that help me achieve those missions. Next slide. So the main thing that I want to get across is effective government requires effective communication. It's how we communicate with our residents, our staff, our business owners, our council. To enhance our communication efforts, they made my position. I have a variety of responsibilities that include distributing information to stakeholders, which include residents, businesses, everyone, local community as well, and people not necessarily in Carefree also care about Carefree. It also includes marketing the town, managing communication channels, and planning community events, along with maintaining the visitor center. To achieve these responsibilities, I'm guided by three core missions, you could go to the next one. Three core missions which come down to two-way communication, reliability, and transparency, and enhancing visitor experience. These are all achieved by these overarching objectives, and there, there's two for each one, and they kind of get broken one, and they kind of get broken down even more. Next one. Two-way communication. The two, uh, objectives underneath this include, um, keeping channels open and maintained and actively seeking feedback and input, input from our stakeholders. This is, next one, sorry. Trying to go fast a little because there's a lot. Um, so to foster our communication channels, I have several goals and I've achieved quite a few milestones, at least in my time here. Our website is one of our major, most accessible communication channels. I mean, everyone can access that if they have a phone, a website, if they go to the library, anywhere they can access it. And last year I vetted several different, um, municipal website providers and I landed on a, one named Aptig. We switched providers in June of 2024 and the new website has increased the amount of information channels I have. There are two new channels on there that are the news and a live feed section. Um, our event section is a lot more up to date now because it's a lot easier to update and keep, keep maintained. Our segmented email lists have shown monthly subscription growth and residents are appreciating the separation of information so they're not getting bombarded with everything if they don't want it all. Responding to emails and social media messages promptly ensures that inquiries are either answered or delegated to the right staff and the right department very quickly. As a part of the communication, or the Community Alliance Coalition, I work with other organizations that are not just in Carefree but also Cave Creek. We all meet, I think, every, every other month. And we talk about our community needs, we brainstorm ideas, we share upcoming event information. Uh, monthly I contact every town department, including the fire department, to gather news, projects, meeting and event details. This helps me create the well-rounded news, newsletter, Carefree Connection that comes out every month. This addresses, this makes sure that it addresses a broad range of areas, not just related to government, but community. I also, um, reach out and I do research on business owners, what events they have coming up. I research what tips or community news are relevant to that time. So we've had a lot of Firewise, um, things coming out in this, these summer months. Um, to address seeking feedback and input, I plan to launch a public opinion survey every year in May to measure our communication satisfaction, to gather feedback for improvements. So whatever residents or, um, whoever receives the emails want to say, whether it's, hey, you're posting too much on social media, or hey, I want more emails on this topic. It's just a way for me to gather feedback and input from, directly from who I'm trying to communicate with to see what they need and what they want. I've also taken over hosting the monthly merchant meetings that we have with our town center business owners. These meetings help us get feedback from them, address their needs, discuss upcoming plans and events, and brainstorm new ideas to boost business in our town center. Next slide. Transparency and reliability. These are achieved by making information accessible, reliable, accurate, and by providing a consistent stream of information through digital and physical channels. Next one. Um, to ensure accuracy, I verify all emails, website edits, documents and social media posts with the appropriate staff. As an example, with the recent election, I verified every single email I sent out with Candace to make sure everything was correct, uh, up to date, and so our voters were informed. I probably sent out, I think, about five emails, maybe less, um, about voter information, voting hours, schedules, um, just to keep everyone informed. Um, sometimes information changes. Uh, with our, uh, street maintenance project, there was quite a few emails that went out because weather changes, but this makes it very necessary to provide updates because I want people to have the most accurate information they can. Whether or not it includes sending seven emails, I do apologize, but I'd rather you have accurate information. Um, switching our website provider has greatly improved the distribution of information as well. Events are now easily repeatable, so people can always rely on that to find, even if it's a month or two in advance, they can find repeatable events and their dates. Um, uh, they're also available in the app, so everything that's on the website is available in the app. And, uh, news posts can be updated as needed, so if something changes, I can easily go and edit those. Um, consistent information streams, uh, are vital for reliability, so people know when they're going to get the information and can be confident. The Carefree Connection letter is sent out on the first of every month and provides a general overview of the month, including everything I mentioned earlier. Community tips, business highlight, that's been a new addition, meeting and, um, meeting and event reminders. Uh, Carefree Next Week is something I added on, uh, during my position here that's released every Friday and reminds the recipients of upcoming events in the next week. Uh, I know when I receive something on the first, I'm not usually going to remember it by the end of the month, so it's a great way to keep that information alive and just in their heads. Uh, I plan to explore an emergency-only notification system for situations like flash floods, dust storms, wildfires, water shut-offs and power outages. I know Maricopa and other entities have emergency, emergency alerts like this, but I want a Carefree specific system. I'll explore both systems we already have, maybe systems with providers, uh, see what would work best for what we need. But this would be the quickest way to communicate emergencies and protocols to our residents. Next slide? Um, oh, sorry. Enhancing the visitor experience involves building creative marketing strategies and collaborating with community stakeholders for events and activities that aim to attract visitors. Effective marketing increases the town's perceived value, which is crucial since our town relies on the visitors. Creative strategies include engaging social media posts, which some of them include Plant Spotlights, Throwback Thursdays, Business Highlights and more. These posts are all very consistently well-received with our audience, and Throwback Thursday is very popular. I plan to explore working with influencers and researching additional social media platforms that could help us reach a larger audience. A Carefree Visitor's Guide and Visit Carefree website will be completed by the end of September to give visitors a place to find information about the town, its businesses and more, so they don't necessarily have to go to our government website if they just want to find, um, a local business in the area that sells soaps or a place to eat. Um, recent improvements to the visitor center aim to enhance its welcoming environment and improve the organization of information. So if a visitor's roaming through the Carefree Gardens, they go into the visitor center, they can easily find dining information, shopping information, wellness information as well. Um, I've recently taken over scheduling with the Sanderson Lincoln Pavilion and I'm working with event organizers constantly. The Earth Day Celebration and the new Retro Reel Series are two examples of community-centric events that capitalize on our small-town charm. I plan to work with business owners to create a business-led fall event that, uh, would make people feel like they're in a Hallmark movie. That's, you know, what I think Carefree is all about. And if, if successful, we would look at doing it in the winter and the spring. I'm also part of the fortieth anniversary committee with Joakimmo, she's over here. And, um, there, we have a lot of exciting events coming up. Our first event sold out very quickly, as Mayor mentioned, and we are very excited, but also sad that we can't provide more seats. Um, our features and images magazine has been wonderful. Thank you to Shelley and Joseph who helped with that. And we are also on the front page of the Sun City Times. In the upcoming year, I will also be a part of the twentieth, twenty-fifth anniversary committee for the Foothills Care Corps to increase my reach with the community and always help, you know, who's part of our community. Next slide. Um, measurement. It is crucial to ensuring our communications are actually effective. I plan to measure success with the yearly communications audit that analyzes social media, emails and website performance. Next year I will add a section on press releases and news mentions. The 2023-2024 communications audit is available in your packet as well. I'm happy to explain any metrics or answer any questions. While this will only be done once a year, please be sure to know that I constantly look at performance. I look at our social media performance, I look at our website performance, I constantly look at it probably every other week, maybe even more. Um, next slide. Thank you. Um, in my ten months with the town, I've accomplished a lot to address the town's needs. However, I'm not done. I'm striving for continuous improvement and adaptation with the world that ever changes. This work plan will more likely evolve and change as new ideas and strategies emerge. I will serve as a, it will serve as a guiding vision for the town's communication goals, ultimately aiming to achieve those three core missions, two-way communication, transparency, reliability, and enhancing the visitor experience. Sorry, a lot of words.
Okay, very well done. Fantastic. So, Madison, you've been here for like, I think, ten months?
Mm-hmm.
And the impact is just incredible, especially of those of you who have followed the town and have tried to dial into our communication, um, that we, we put out there. Madison has been just fantastic. And the only complaint I hear is sometimes there's too much, and we have tools on a website where you can actually dial it back.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe just explain that again for those folks who...
Yeah, I will say that, um, emails, I, I know there's a lot of them, and especially if you want to be well-informed, you're going to get a lot of them because I'd rather be too informed than less informed. Um, we do have the segmented email list that I mentioned, so you can click on if you just want the monthly newsletter, if you just want the weekly newsletter, if you just want emergencies, which, uh, include street road projects. Um, I also try and aim to post everything that I email out on the news section of our new website. So if you don't want to, you don't want to receive them, or you just don't tend to see them, you can go on our website and find them there as well.
And can you talk, you have a new app? Maybe just talk about that for a second?
Mm-hmm. So the new app is pretty much an identical reflection of our website, but it's not the website in an app form. Um, it's really user-friendly, uh, there's different sections for news, events, there's a calendar. Um, you can view all the news and events that I post that are on the website on the app, they automatically go there. Um, you can also access forms from there. We have the stormwater violation form, so if you see someone that is, um, dumping stuff that they're not supposed to and/or, uh, our washes, you can report it there 24/7. We also have, I converted the citizen complaint form into an online form as well. So if you're out and, let's say, somebody's blasting music at 1:00 a.m. and it's above our noise ordinance, you can easily go on there, fill it out, put everything. It's basically like the paper form but online.
Yes. So when, when you started, you said effective government begins with effective communications. And you really bring effective communication, so thank you. So any other comments or questions from council?
I just wanted to say, I thought we were doing a pretty good job before we hired you. But we weren't doing anything, and you've made such an amazing difference in our communications efforts, so, great job.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right, is that it?
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you, Madison. Very good. Agenda item number nine, review discussion and possible action to authorize a contract with Bridge Group LLC to develop a new Carefree organization strategic plan. Um, so, for all of you who have ever worked in the corporate world or in a board, you've dealt with strategic plans. So what do strategic plans do? You come up with a roadmap, you build a foundational, a roadmap, or to, basically to look ahead to, um, to set goals, to set objectives, and then to, um, figure out how to accomplish those things within the resources that you have. So in a town like ours, our resources are pretty limited, so we need to be really efficient and identify what we want to accomplish. So you identify long-term goals and you attack them with short-term actions. So our goal is to come up with a strategic plan. How do we do that? Well, in this particular case, um, what's on the agenda tonight is to discuss bringing a consultant on board to help us to put together a plan. And you might ask, well, why do it now? Well, we have three new council members coming on board in December, they'll be seated. And these council members, these new, new council members probably bring more knowledge about the town than probably, uh, very few council members have done before them. Why is that? Because we just went through a, a year and a half general plan process where they were engaged. Our, our budget process today is a narrative, they read that, they're really well-informed. And so what we want to be able to do is when they're seated in December, to, um, have a, a plan before them that they can approve, uh, that reflects their inputs. So, the, the way that your strategic plan development will work, there will be, if we engage with this consultant, there'll be three workshops, probably September, beginning in September, and the town council will be there, all the incumbents, plus the three new council members. And they'll all sit around the table, equal footing, um, and they'll knock out a plan based on their inputs, what's important to them. Um, and then in December, the new council will approve it. And they'll own it. And the objective is that as they move forward, what's important to them is in that plan. So to me, this is, this is just fantastic, because they get a running start, uh, to, basically, put their fingerprints on the town and do what they think is important. The, uh, the company that we're talking with, Bridge Group LLC, consists of two primary, um, uh, people involved. One gentleman served as the, uh, town manager of, of Sedona and the assistant town manager of Tucson. So he comes to the party with a great administrative experience. The other is currently, uh, has served, I believe, thirteen years as an elected, uh, town council member in Avondale. Also has served on many different boards. They've been in this business for twenty years. They, they bring a good, strong foundation. And at the end, what do I expect to see? Just like in the general plan, there'll be elements, things that, that this group thinks are important. So maybe like, uh, they'll define it, but things like, uh, strategic or, um, economic viability, economic sustainability, uh, reviewing infrastructure, uh, looking at how the organization works, things like that. Uh, Cave Creek recently went through a process with this same organization, and speaking with the mayor, Morris, over there, I think it was very successful. And so I think this is good for us. And the timing, like I said, I think is perfect. With three new council members coming on board, I think it's ideal. Um, so having said that, I would open it up to the council for questions or comments.
Um, I would just say, in reading through their plan, um, I think that they are, the process that they use of pre-work is very important. And, um, in the strategic planning meetings that I experienced in my career, um, that sets the stage to be able to have really robust discussions when you all sit down together. So I really like that they are doing that, and I think it will be very beneficial for us.
Yeah, I think so, absolutely. Especially now that we have four-year terms. So these three new council members are going to be on the council for four years. So they have four years to basically work on this strategic plan and implement it. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have no public comment. So having none, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I was going to make a, a comment. I've, I've been involved in, uh, programs like this with large architectural firms and, uh, at, at the end, I think it becomes also a team-building exercise, and I think that everybody, you know, works well together during the process and, and, um, I, I think it adds a lot of dynamics, so.
Yeah, exactly right. So I think going forward, we'll have a plan, that we will operate better, but just to your point, we'll operate better together as a unit. Oh, yes, so the cost of this is $29,500. And I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to proceed with entering into a professional services contract with the Bridge Group LLC for the sum of $29,500 to develop the new strategic plan.
John, I'll make that motion.
I second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. And these workshops, I believe, are public workshops, and they'll be really, they'll be, they'll be great. Item number ten, public hearing, review and discussion and possible action to approve amendments to the town's municipal separate storm source system, MS4 standards, Carefree Town Code, Chapter Five, Article Six, Section Twelve, second reading. So you might recall, we had the first reading at the last council meeting, and this is the second reading. Mr. Neese?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yes, this is a riveting discussion on, uh, clean water. Uh, this is one of these federal mandates that are passed on to the states and the states pass it on to the local jurisdictions, and then they pass a price tag on to it. So not only do we have to implement this, but we have to pay the state to implement this. So, uh, it's a requirement of all municipalities within the respective, uh, clean water permit. So, uh, it's part of the Clean Water Act. Once again, that goes back to 1972. Uh, every jurisdiction that is required to have a national pollutant discharge elimination permit, um, and the permit is reviewed by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. And ADQ mandates the adoption and updates of ordinances to address pollution entering into the storm drain and respective washes. In, uh, 2023, in September of 2023... In 2023, in September of 2023, we had an audit by ADQ. Not surprising, they do this for all municipalities every four years. But they identified some things, and codes are eventually updated every now and then, that we needed to strengthen and come in line with some of the other surrounding jurisdictions. So they pointed those out to us, and that's what this amendment is about. More specifically, Section 5, 6, 12 of the Town Code details enforcement procedures and penalties for violations of the town's stormwater ordinance. The proposed revisions strengthen the Town Code by clarifying property owner responsibilities, detailing procedures for processing violations, and aligning penalties for violations with those of neighboring communities. Very riveting, I know, but it's one of those requirements that we have to ensure that we have alignment with adjacent jurisdictions, because there's contractors that do work in other jurisdictions, and they want an expectation that what's required in Carefree is also required in Scottsdale and where else they're doing work. So that is an important part of what the state does, is the continuity between the respective requirements. So first reading, as the mayor alluded to, was last month. The Town Code requires two readings of an ordinance. This is our second reading. So tonight, mayor, we're having the public hearing, so we have to open and close the public hearing. If there's no comments, then you can consider adoption. If adopted, it takes 30 days to become effective, and the action before the council tonight is to adopt ordinance number 2024-02. That being said, be glad to address any questions that the council might have.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So since the last reading, there's been no changes?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? So hearing none, I'll open up the public hearing. If you wish to speak to this, you're welcome to fill out a slip and come up and speak. So, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I would, I'll go right ahead.
Just have one question. How much additional work with things that they were expecting of us to do, Gary? A lot of hours, or just a little bit? Are we modifying existing policies or practices?
It's part and parcel with what town staff does on a daily basis. So going out and doing inspections of construction sites, we do get complaints, neighbors pointing fingers at one another, so we have to do those inspections. But there's things that we have to do that are not associated with the construction industry, and that's monitoring our washes. So there's dry inspection of washes, and then we have wet inspection. So we actually have some monitors out at certain areas within the community that we have a third party come in, and they take the sampling when the wash does run a couple times a year, and they take it to a lab, and then we have to report to ADQ every September. There's an annual report. That annual report is also downloaded on our website in association with our stormwater management plan. That stormwater management plan I updated in February. It's probably 50 or 60 pages. It talks about what the deliverables are this upcoming year and for the next few years, what we're looking to do. This was one of those elements that we're delivering and ensuring that we're in compliance. So there is a workload associated with it, and it's part and parcel with what town staff does on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. And it's one of those things that people don't know about, but as far as a jurisdiction, you're required to do. So it's one of those things that takes a lot of time to do. And once again, we have to pay the state to do this, and we're actually doing the work. So every jurisdiction does it. Some jurisdictions have an assessment on their water bills that pay for this respective program. So larger jurisdictions like Scottsdale has an assessment.
Are they looking for particular trace metals or debris?
Yes, all of the above. Yes.
Yeah, so it's a relatively new, unfunded mandate.
And ballpark, you think additional costs will be for us?
You know, I-
You know, it's integrated with everything else, but-
I can't even break that out. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of time. It took me a tremendous amount of time just to revisit that report. But once again, you could read the report, you could read all the documentation, the educational information that we had to produce. I can't even tell you how many hours it takes you to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? So hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-02.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2024-02.
Second.
Any other, before we vote, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 11, authorization of capital funds to install solar-operated LED blinking stop signs at the intersection of Pima and Cave Creek Roads, as well as Mule Train and Cave Creek Roads. Mr. Neese.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor alluded to early on in the council meeting, the pedestrian crosswalks on Tom Darlington, as we all know, everybody's driven through Tom Darlington, has begun. Hopefully, they will be done at the end of September, weather permitting, and they have to order equipment. That equipment is on order, and hopefully they can get that equipment here on a timely basis. But everything's moving very nicely, and the quality of work looks, looks great so far. With that project, one of the improvements is the stop signs at Tom Darlington and Cave Creek Road will receive the installation of these blinking LED stop signs. The idea behind it is compliance, and it makes those stop signs a little bit more visible, both during the day and at night. They are solar-operated. This is the ones that will be installed on Tom Darlington and Cave Creek Road. During public discussion, it was brought up that maybe we should also consider at this point in time installing these solar stop signs at Pima and Cave Creek Road. We also have received requests for dealing with Mule Train and Cave Creek Road, too. Each of those intersections has seven stop signs, so a total of 14 stop signs. At last month's meeting, I was asked, you know, how much do these cost? I said about $3,000. That did not include installation. Installation adds a significant amount, so we're looking at approximately $6,500 per sign. So you multiply that through 14 signs, you're looking at $91,000 with tax included there. There's five poles that are actually in the asphalt itself. There's no protective curb in these, and that was one of my concerns, is they could be clipped by trucks and vehicles. In order to protect them, there's a small barrel or sleeve that can be put around there that has a high reflective element to it that will protect these poles, hopefully at nighttime when they typically are clipped. Each one of those is about $500. With the five poles, that's another $2,500. So that brings us to a total of $93,500. With these construction projects, there's always things that pop up. Would like to see a contingency there of $15,000. So the total request would be $108,500. The funding would come from our capital reserve funds, and this funding basically helps to address the concern that the public has with the safety of these intersections and the compliance. And these signs hopefully will, will improve that compliance. It's not a panacea. Obviously, we're working on long-term things. And if we don't need these signs in the future, we can repurpose them in other locations. So it's not money that is not well-spent, and I think the gentleman who raised this said, you know, what's the price of safety? You know, this is, this is investment in safety, and it's hard to argue against that. So it's a worthwhile investment, hopefully improves compliance at these intersections. So the request is for a total of $108,500 from our capital reserve fund.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So in the end of the day, we'll have, all the four-way stops on Cave Creek Road will have these LED stop signs. Tom Darlington, Cave Creek Road, Mule Train, Cave Creek Road, Pima and Cave Creek Road. And basically, for roughly $100,000, we'll never know, but if it saves one life for a big critical accident, it's well worth the money. And Mike Braun brought this up at the last council meeting, so thank you very much. And it's a very good thing for us to do. So while we're here, maybe you could just provide an update on the MAGG project for Pima and Cave Creek Road.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we received through Scottsdale and Maricopa Association of Governments a quarter-million-dollar grant that allows us to study at a high level the intersection of Pima and Cave Creek Road. Scottsdale and the intersections along Pima Road all the way down to just past Cinquedados will also be studied, and they'll look at the capacity of the road there. So this is looking at our section, our third of a mile of Pima Road there, south of Cave Creek Road, and the sections within Scottsdale at a holistic level. There will be some public meetings associated with that. Those public meetings will be both digitally, so there'll be a virtual platform, as well as in-person. We don't know the nature of those right now. There is a separate contract just focused on the public involvement aspect of this, of approximately $60,000. That contract is going in front of MAGG for the approval process in the next month. So that study is kicking off, and there will be future public meetings to talk about the intersection in Carefree, as well as the intersection at Stagecoach. And one of the things that Scottsdale is introducing to intersections in Scottsdale are roundabouts. And I know some people do not like roundabouts. They feel like there's confusion associated with that. But Scottsdale has found that the safety associated with those roundabouts has improved the, or has decreased the accidents at these intersections. And there hasn't been one fatality at any of the roundabouts. There are fender benders, but there's no fatalities. So Scottsdale's actually looking at decommissioning signalized intersections because of the T-boning that's occurring and the fatalities that are occurring at signalized intersections. So Scottsdale will be part of these discussions, and there's a lot of education associated with what they're proposing. And they're excited to present that information to Carefree residents and have a collective discussion about roundabouts and the performance of intersections, and why it's important to look at it at a holistic basis and see how all these intersections can work together to move the traffic safely through Carefree, as well as that portion of Scottsdale.
So roughly, how many roundabouts are there in Scottsdale, do you know?
They told me over 30 now.
Yeah, so they're clearly think it's a good solution.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, go ahead. Just, you know, Cave Creek has had these lights, blinking lights on some of the signs for a while. You speak with them and all, and any comments to share on that?
I have not spoken with them about this respective solution.
Obviously, it helps. There's no doubt.
Obviously, it helps that, you know, they had the same situation there at Schoolhouse and Cave Creek Road with the lack of compliance and people running into each other. So I believe it has improved that intersection. It's, once again, not a panacea, panacea, but it has improved compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So open up the public comment. We have one public comment. Mr. Mike Braun, please step forward. I'll limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
Mike Braun, I'm a Carefree resident. I just want to thank the mayor for spearheading this so quickly. I am very hopeful that it will, as you say, Gary, improve the situation. It's not the perfect answer of everything, but there have been some very, very nasty accidents and actually deaths at that corner. I live right near there, and I can see people rolling that intersection all the time, faster and faster as, as time goes by. I also want to thank for, I'm pleased to hear that Maricopa County is gonna come back into us with some cars, because I haven't seen, I haven't seen a policeman at that corner jeez, I can't tell you how long. And that is certainly a deterrent, just as hopefully this is a deterrent. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for that, and Gary, for you, you know, picking it up and putting it together so quickly. It's very nice, and I thank you very much. And hopefully, it will pass.
Okay, well, thank you. In fact, to that point, when I met with Captain Laterno, we talked about, you know, stationing empty cars, so they have more cars than they have staff. So they can park a car, they move it around occasionally, and it helps people behave better. That's what we want. We're not in the business of issuing tickets. What we want people to do is behave and follow the law. Okay, next public comment is from Ms. Janet Vivas.
Janet Vivas, Langwood Lane. I'm just curious about the stop signs. Do they offer anything more than blinking? Do they do photographs? Do they keep data?
Unfortunately, Mayor, they do not. So it's a very simplistic system, and it just blinks, yes. We are looking at the purchase of some solar speed radar signs that will collect data. They will be cloud-based, and there'll be a subscription associated with that. And I'm waiting for the vendor to contact me and update their proposal that they provided to me prior to our municipal budget process. So I'm trying to get that refreshed, and then I'll bring that back to council. So there will be the opportunity with the solar speed radar signs to collect data, but they don't have cameras on them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have no additional public comments, so thank you very much. One other question, Gary. So when would you expect these signs to be installed?
Oh, that's, that's an excellent question. I told the contractor that I will contact them in the morning if approved by council tonight. And it could take six to eight weeks, perhaps more, perhaps less. But that's the message that the vendor shared with our contractor last week.
Okay, so we should probably have them by the end of October. And the ones at Tom Darlington and Cave Creek Road will probably be installed by the end of September, because they're part of the crosswalk project.
I would hope, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So hearing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize $108,500 of capital funds to install solar-operated blinking stop signs at the intersections of Mule Train, Cave Creek Roads, and Pima, Cave Creek Roads to further address community safety concerns. Have a motion?
I have a motion. Support that.
Second.
Very good. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Good discussion. Item number 12, review discussion and possible action to approve a Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license application by Carefree Gas and Gina Mennder Gill, agent. Probably didn't do that very well.
Mayor and council, as Mr. Prokopik described to you, last month, there is a change in ownership of what we consider our Shell Station at the corridor of Tom Darlington and Cave Creek Road. Of course, they want to continue the service of selling packaged liquors. Therefore, they are required to change their license, their liquor license, to comply with the new ownership. It's nothing more, nothing changes as far as the public is concerned. And I don't know, Gina was invited here. I don't believe she's here. So if you don't have any questions.
Any questions from anyone? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license application of Carefree Gas, Gina Mennder Gill, agent.
Motion to approve the Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license application of Carefree Gas, Gina Mennder Gill, agent.
Second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 13, call to the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take legal action at this time. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. So have one slip. Councilman Tom McGuire from Cave Creek, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Mayor, members of the council, I want to congratulate the three people who got elected. I look forward to working with those of you who are continuing, and working with the new members. So that's, that's a great thing. I hope that in the future, we can learn from one another. You got four-year terms, we did not. We got regional aid, you did not, so hopefully both communities can learn from one another. Pardon my wry sense of humor, W-R-Y. I also want to point out that when we sit with our new council, we will have seven of us who have been elected in this particular election, and that's certainly better than Carefree has, because I think you're only going to have three people who won this particular election. So, John, I'm sorry you didn't win the election, and I offer those condolences to the other people who did not, but hopefully at some point, we will go to the four-year terms, too, so it's a pleasure to work with you.
Oh, thank you, Tom. It's a pleasure to work with Cave Creek as well. So that closes call to the public, we have no other slips, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so thank you all very much. Good discussion tonight.